Go ahead and call the meeting to order if you would, please rise.
Just sit down.
Pastor Tammy Parrish with First Pentecostal, the First United Pentecostal will lead us in our invocation.
Our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. We pray, O God, that your will would be accomplished in our great city and county. We pray, Savior, for a spirit, a bond of unity and the leadership of our city. We pray that as these men and women come together, that your will would be accomplished. We pray that you would guide and direct every decision that they make. We ask you, O God, for godly wisdom as they make decisions affecting the people of Odessa in Hector County. We pray that as we strive for the betterment of our city, that you would open the windows of heaven and pour out blessings upon the leadership and the citizens of Odessa. We pray that Odessa would grow and prosper not only in the oil industry and the gas industry, but in multifaceted industries as well. Father, we ask that your favor would rest upon the city of Odessa. We pray that the forces of darkness that attack our city would be driven back by the power of your spirit. We ask, Father, that you set a hedge of angels around this city and that your angels would walk the streets of Odessa to protect each and every resident. I pray a hedge of protection over every council leader, over every city leader, over every first responder and every officer, every home and every business. We pray that your peace that passes all understanding would guard the hearts and the minds of every man, woman, and child of this city. And we ask for peace to settle into the heart of the city and to move across this county. We ask this according to your will and in the name that is above all names, the mighty and powerful precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Next we have the pledges, Councilmember Graff will lead us in them.
If you would join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now to the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Let me be seated. Okay, we will now move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
In second.
Excuse me, second.
Have a motion in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next we move to other council actions. We'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of Dr. Thangam, owner. Mr. Brenley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city mailed out five notices related to this case, none of these notices were returned. We did not receive any written protests or written approvals related to this request. The council approved this request on first reading back on May the 22th of this year. The property involved in the request is located east of the intersection of Highway 191 Service Road and Rocky Lane Road. This site is currently designated future development, it is vacant. Land use in the area does consist of residential development and vacant land. The applicants in this case are Dr. Thangam, he is the owner of the property, and Billy Bassett is his representative. The purpose of the request for the original zoning of Retail One would facilitate retail development and related uses on this site. The proposed land use for this area is consistent with the city's future land use map. This area is considered a prime retail development land adjacent to Highway 191. This development would act as a buffer with the existing residential development to the south and the traffic corridor of Highway 191. The retail design of the development will be held to aesthetic guidelines that will include building features, landscaping, screening, buffering, and controlled ingress and egress. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval of this request, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation and be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council? This is a public hearing, so at this time I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item two, remove from the table and open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Triple J Investments. We need a motion to remove it from the table.
So moved. Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously, it is now on the table. Mr. Brenley.
Yes, sir, the council did table this request back on March 13th of this year in order to allow the applicant an opportunity to address the concerns that were expressed by surrounding property owners. These concerns have been addressed and the item has been removed from the table. The property involved in this request is located in the northeast corner of the intersection of Dawn Avenue and Charles Walker. Site is currently designated future development, it is vacant. Land use in the area does consist of residential development and vacant land. The applicant in the case is Triple J Investments, do own the property, Josh Olaf is representative of this company. The purpose of the request is to create six lots, the average size of these lots is approximately 11,500 square feet. This would facilitate single-family residential development and related uses on the property. The area is located in the northern part of the city's future land use map. This area is considered one of the prime areas for new residential growth in Odessa. The proposed land use for this area is consistent with the identified city priority of vibrant new neighborhoods and a diverse range of housing. The zoning requested for this site is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways with the intended land use context taken into consideration. No, I'm sorry. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this request to Special Dwelling District, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions from council?
I do. Our council chambers were packed.
Yes ma'am.
And I would like to know exactly what changes they have made. I see that they are putting in an alley.
Yes ma'am.
But there were a lot of things that people were very upset about, and I'd like to have those answered, please.
Yes ma'am, they're going to put in dumpsters instead of the rollout containers. I think their representative said he did not even want to hear the word rollout container anymore, so they will be doing that. The alley will be paved, so that will not be an impact. So they have addressed the concerns that way, Ms. Graff, and I do believe that there's still residents in the area that might address the council when we do.
They are, we've got two cars.
Okay, good, I'd like to hear from you.
Yes ma'am.
Any other questions from council?
No, one other question. By any chance, did you send out the new plans to the people that spoke to us last time?
Well, we sent out the zoning exhibit that we did have that showed the alley and all that as far as a specific design of what the developer is proposing yet. We have not seen that since the new layout of the properties and alley has come in.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I have one more question, Mr. Brenley. This is a zoning change request, is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
We do have two individuals that would like to speak. Philip Baker.
May I finish?
Sure, yeah, come on.
Those questions on the positive side before we hear from John Langgraf, 521 North Texas. Also, Ms. Graff, we did a side yard setback of 25 feet there so that no fence can be built forward of that, so there's more than ample room for sight distance. I know that was a question.
Right.
Last time too. So we've taken care of that along with the alley, paved alley, and I believe the city's committed to putting dumpsters in that alley, so I think that resolved most of the questions. The house here, I think if you have a traffic question, there are very few cars on Charles Walker Road as compared to Dawn Avenue.
Right, and one question I had when I was looking at that, why didn't you have the alley go all the way down to the end and that would give even more vision for the people?
I'll let traffic address that. They asked that we not bring the alley out to Dawn Avenue because of the potential number of conflicts, but I'll.
Well, I wouldn't have had it go out on Dawn where you have it coming in, I would have gone on down and gone around the corner and come back out.
I think she's saying putting it parallel to Dawn. Yeah.
Oh, instead of, I think it's one line.
See, you're having it between House One and Two.
Oh.
I would have gone all the way down to House One and then gone down like that.
Oh.
I just thought that would give more of a visibility area. But, you know what, that's not my job, so that's why I'm asking you.
I think sometimes if you have an alley right next to the street like that, sometimes people get confused by the traffic situation if they see a car coming down the alley and they don't, you know.
That makes sense too.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and, Mr. Philip Baker, if you would, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I just want to thank y'all for your help on this. I did have one concern, will the utilities and stuff be brought down, the alleys, because there are several of us that have water wells in the front of our yards, and I know that the water well has to be so far off of the main trunk line for the, so.
Yes, you told us we'll come down the alley.
Okay, that'd be great, that's pretty much answers my question, so thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Next, Javier Morales.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Norma, Michael. I want, just to use this time to thank everybody, that's why I'm here, my two minutes, I want to thank Josh and Mr. Langgraf for the headache we gave them, and we appreciate them helping us. Also, the neighbors that came together, and most important, leadership of Michael, it's been great to be able to work with him, Randy, Mr. Phil, and everybody to come together, and I'm very happy with what, you know, and we have a lot other issues, we're talking about traffic, safety on that line curve, and they're working on that, and I'm very happy. And so, it just shows you an example that you can't leave everything in the lap of the city to do the city government. And I hope the media will also probably talk about this, because we only hear bad about our city, and hopefully the media will talk good, and we always, we do have good too that we can talk about on the media. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you coming.
Sure, come on up. I'm sorry, who are you?
Mike Podzimny. Thank you, I appreciate you letting me speak at this time. Thank you guys for the progress that y'all have made on this and eliminating the trashcans and moving the alley to the back. I think that Danny Morales is not, or Munius is not real excited that the alley comes between the House One and the House Two, comes right directly into his house, and I'm only addressing that for him, he may want to talk. I guess a concern that I have as you look at this, do all six lots go all the way out to Dawn? Because right now, without a house there, it is, it is a little bit dangerous right now at that stop sign as you look directly to the north and there's cars coming around that curve that you cannot see. You can actually see them right now because you can see them over the fence posts as they're coming. Well, that visual is getting ready to be eliminated, I assume, if there's a house all the way to the corner of Dawn. So, that's a concern, I think, that we ought to have from a safety standpoint. A mention was made that as compared to the amount of traffic on Dawn, that Charles Walker Road is not really a very busy street. I'm not sure when those, when that road was watched to be able to see what the count of the traffic was on our road right there, but it is extremely busy during the school time, especially in the morning. And so, I understand if, and I don't know whether this is true or this is not true, but I understand that Dawn is going to be a four-lane highway, is that accurate in the near future?
Five lanes.
Five lanes, and we're gonna have a red light at the intersection of Dawn and Yukon in the near and dear future, is that correct? So whenever that light goes in, and I don't know, maybe these five lanes will handle that, but you're gonna have a block up of traffic there at that red light on Dawn and Yukon, and that traffic's gonna block up, and you know where it's gonna go. It's gonna go down our street, and so that is going to make that a little bit more difficult. And I don't just come with a problem, I come with a solution, and we talked about this the last time we were there, and I think that most of our residents in that area would love to have a cul-de-sac there. If that's something that we can do, that would make our street a lot safer street. And so, I only bring that to your attention because I've talked with a lot of people since we've had the last meeting, and I think the majority of our people would love to be able to have that. So, that's all I have, and I appreciate, appreciate everyone.
If I may address, the vision cutback for the proposed Lot Six that's at the intersection, the cutback is a 20-foot cutback, and there is a mandatory building setback of 25 feet in addition to the right-of-way, so there will be vision there and there will actually be vegetation cut down, so the vision should be improved. So there will not be anything built up to the street or the intersection, so the vision will be addressed as far as traffic safety that way. And investing with Hal, when Dawn is expanded, they are taking into account what Mr. Podzimny had stated about the incorporation of a cul-de-sac on Charles Walker, so that is being considered at this time too.
Well, if they're considering that cul-de-sac, wouldn't this be the time to put it in?
Well, I think I'll let Hal address that when it be appropriate. I knew I'd get him worked in eventually here.
Um, we've got a couple of other cul-de-sacs that come out in that subdivision just south of Charles Walker, and it's a pipe rail fence basically closing the street, and you can see the traffic paths around the barricades. So we could put out a barricade, but I don't think it would be as effective if we did it permanently with roadway construction if we go that route.
If we did that, we were supposed to do it at the time we would redo the road, correct?
Correct, at roadway construction time of Dawn.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, any more comments from the audience? If not, I will go ahead and close this public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold on, this is our first reading, right?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, then I will, aye.
Okay, all opposed, the motion passes. Moving to item three.
That way if people in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
They have another chance to come up and express themselves.
We'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Callan Petroleum Operating Company, owner ICA. Mr. Brenley.
Yes, sir, we had one notice sent out related to this request, it was not returned, and we did receive a written approval related to the request. The property involved in the request is located in the far eastern portion of the city limits. This is north of the old Bankhead Highway and east of Enclave at Mission Ranch subdivision. This site is currently designated future development, it is vacant. Land use in the area is vacant land, and there are some drill pads in this area. The applicant is Callan Petroleum, they are the owner, ICA is the agent, and the purpose of the request is create a consolidated drill site that would allow drilling access for mineral rights holders. The area is located in the far east section of the city's future land use map that's north of the Bankhead Highway. This area of future land use map does call for medium-density, single-family residential development. Land uses and area conditions have not changed in a way that would contradict this request. Oil and gas well development will be required to include buffering, which would include screening and landscaping, and it would minimize any impact to the surrounding areas. The applicant in this case is taking steps to buffer the property adjacent to this site through a decorative solid masonry screening fence and numerous evergreen trees. Also, to minimize the impact, access to this site will be limited to the far east portion of this site. It will be coming off of County Road, I believe it's 1275, I believe that's what the number is. The zoning requested for this site is not out of scale with the needs of the neighborhood or the city. The creation of a consolidated drill site would reduce the number of individual drill sites in the area, and it will free up land for neighborhood amenities or additional housing. And I believe, I can tell the council that this is the trend in oil and gas well exploration is to have these consolidated drill sites and have numerous wells on one side and eliminate the need for individual wells, and this is what we'll be seeing more of in the future. And be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
I'm glad they're doing it.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye abstained.
Abstained. Okay, so the vote is two to zero. Norma, do I need to vote to make it three?
No, because we didn't vote against each other.
No, just making sure. Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Brenley. Next resolution, consider authorizing the abandonment of an alley right-of-way. Avon.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor of the council. This item is to consider authorizing the abandonment of Alley Right-of-Way. The Kent Companies has requested that the city abandon .069 acre of Alley Right-of-Way between North County Road West and Elliot Avenue located in Block 49, Scarborough Place, second filing. The city will not retain general utility access or drainage movement over the abandoned alley. The abandonment will facilitate commercial development, and the Kent Companies has agreed to the compensation due for this abandonment, which is $8,730. City staff recommends approval of this item, and I'll be glad to answer to your questions.
Okay, are there any questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much, Avon. Item five, consider the request of the Odessa Convention and Visitor bureaus to reallocate previously awarded sports recruitment grant, 2017, 2018. Ms. Mutt.
Yes, council, this is a request by the Convention and Visitors Bureau of the Chamber of Commerce to reallocate previously approved sports recruitment grant for the current period, 1718, that we are in currently. They were awarded $50,000 for a golf tour that selected a different city, and they are asking the council to allow them to reallocate that portion of their grant, the $50,000, to be used for other purposes of the sports recruitment grant. I've asked Monica Shauner to be here to present this item. She is the director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we sent out a packet to y'all with this agenda item that would explain their process for awarding these grants, and I'll ask Monica to come in. Does everyone have theirs, would they like an extra copy?
Everybody have their.
I have, well, give me another one, I'll have to.
Yeah, I didn't bring one.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. As Cindy stated, we do have a process for this money. The associations come to us, they fill out an application, we then take the application, they have their event, they're required to fill another post-application 30 days after their event is over, and once they have their numbers into us, then it goes before a sports committee. And the sports committee does take a vote, they look to see that, you know, that they qualify for the amount that they're requesting. If they don't, then, you know, they award them accordingly. So we do have a couple of organizations that do, have submitted requests for this money, and that's where we are with requesting the reallocation of the money that's currently there.
Okay, any questions?
Can you talk about those for us?
Yes ma'am, and actually, we have a couple of representatives from each one. The first one is the PAGA, Pan American Golf Association. They have a golf tournament, they raise money for scholarships for both OHS and Permian students. And then the second one is the All-Star Softball Girls Tournament, and that one brings in a significant amount of attendees. We are anticipating about 5,000 out-of-town attendees. Right now, we're looking at 1,000 room nights, and currently with the formula that we, the formula that we currently have, they have the potential to bring in $3,375,000 economic impact into our community, and that's gonna be held in July. Any other questions?
Any questions? Okay, we do have one citizen that would like to speak, Diana Ordanelles. If you would, please come forward. I apologize about butchering.
That's okay. Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Diana Ordunias, I serve as the current treasurer of the Odessa Pan American Golf Association. We're asking for allocations, of course, we submitted a grant from the city. Our organization hosted a two-day, it's a national event, we have three national events throughout the state. We hosted the Winter Meet, which was in April. In 2017, we originally had both golf courses, Sunset and Ratliff. The beginning of the year, Ratliff told us they substantially raised the rates. It was not in our budget. I mean, we were charging $100 a person. So, at last minute, we had to change that to Andrews. We still kept our original first-day tournament at Sunset, of course, that day had 70 mile-hour winds. We were proposed to have about 85 players, we still had 36 players that day. Our original membership, our original registrations were, we're looking at 200 and, almost 250 players. Once we changed it out of Odessa to Andrews, that substantially dropped. So that also put it, once the budget's in making, we already have contracts we signed, things that we've already obligated to pay. So, goodness, we still came out, you know, by the hair of our chinny chin chin. We allocate our funds to several different community stuff. We want to have a junior golf clinic, want to reach out to the Boys and Girls Club, kind of expose children that may never play golf, expose them to the game of golf, so these, this costs money. The last five years, we have given both OHS and Permian $500 scholarships, we've even given Odessa College scholarships, people that are already at Odessa College. So that's where our money is, you know, we're really hoping that you may consider allocation of funds to the sports. Thank you.
I think it's wonderful that you do that, but as far as I'm concerned, this doesn't really qualify for what that $100,000 was for. This was a convention, and I think we've all been at conventions, and at almost every convention I've been with, one or two days, people play golf. It's voluntary.
Right.
You either, you go to museums, or you go shopping, or you play golf, or some of them you do horseshoes, and some of them you do cards, or dominoes, or whatever.
Actually, we have, excuse me, we actually have three tournaments that are played. The tournaments are all based on scholarship basis. That's what these tournaments bring in. They bring in the survival of the organization and tournaments that they hold. It was actually a three-hour workshop. It's not really a convention where everybody goes and participates. It's only, we have 42 chapters in eight states, it's only the delegates that do the workshop. So it wasn't something that everybody just came to do something, they actually just came to play the tournament. It was only the delegates that went to the workshop.
Well, I still, to me, it does not qualify for what we want that $100,000 to do, I'm sorry.
Michael, may I address in regards to the unfortunate results that Pan American did have? That because of the unfortunate results, that reevaluation of what did happen will be what is looked at by the committee for, how much money they do get, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Is it $100,000 y'all have?
There was $100,000.
We had 45 that was used before, but they- We had 45 that was used before, but this is a $50,000 that we're looking at this.
Yes, sir, to be reallocated, $50,000.
Okay, any more questions?
I'd just like to make a statement that, you know, I think the number thing that we need to look at is return on investment. When you have a total of a $50,000 investment and you receive nearly 3.3 million, which is roughly 68 times what you put in, that's pretty good.
Yes, sir.
I know the Odessa rodeo, Odessa College rodeo was huge.
Huge, yes, sir.
The night I was there, it was 3,000 to 4,000 people. I was surprised.
Yes, and that's what we want to do.
How are we able to measure that, that 3.3?
It's a formula.
It's an economic.
So, we have a program with the Convention and Visitors Bureau called IDSS, and it has, you know, that's how we figure out the economic impact. We plug in the numbers, and then it lets us know what that impact is.
Would you talk about the girls' baseball or softball a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. So, currently with the numbers that they've submitted, that's happening in July. Currently, they have 5,000 out-of-town attendees, and they're looking at 7,000 local attendees, so that's 12,000 people total. There's 2,400 girls that will be playing in that tournament, and right now, they have approximately 1,000 room nights, but if you look back in 2011, there was like 2,700 room nights. So, we're anticipating that there's going to be even more. This one is bigger than the one in 2011.
And when that $100,000 was set up, that was what we were wanting to bring in.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a pretty good model of what we were wanting.
Right.
Fantastic.
Yes, ma'am, and again, you know, we do have a sports committee in place. They look and analyze all that information that is given to them, and they determine what amount is given to each organization that applies for that money.
Okay, any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shauner. Let me get back over here. Next move to miscellaneous appointment of boards. Odessa Housing Finance Corp., Thomas Blackstone. Okay, Community Development, Mr. Bryant, are you ready to?
No, not yet.
Okay, Mr. Gardner's out of town. Traffic, Ms. Craft, you want to?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Mr. Gardner's out of town. Citizens Golf Committee, Ms. Carbohal has resigned, didn't she?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to look for, okay. Okay, CRMWD, Mickey and Dan.
We're going to be interviewing those.
Interviewing those next, okay. Board of Survey.
I haven't decided yet.
Okay, and I haven't, then we have Permian Care basing that. MHMR.
Relec John.
Relec John. Zoning Board of Adjustments, any there? Both of them are out of town, and I'm going to look at that, so.
I make a motion to accept Mr. Blackstone for Odessa Housing and Mr. Langgraf for Permian Care.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Citizens comments on non-agenda item, Mr. Toby Ove.
Good evening, Council Mayor. It's Toby Ove, 74 Seboa Court, and your partner in the Hotel and Convention Center. It's been a couple of years since I've been before the council, so my wife has actually been the face of our business official, and probably you guys are grateful for that instead of it being me, because it's a much better face than mine, but anyway.
Now, you said that, we did.
No, you were thinking it, though, Barbara, so I just went ahead and made it public.
Well, maybe so, but.
What I'm here to speak to about tonight's The Ector, but before I do, I kind of need to, I'd like to go backwards a little bit, speak about the hotel, and then come into The Ector, but, because originally, you know, the whole downtown project was the city's vision, and it was a long time coming. I can't even, it probably goes back sometime around Lorraine. I mean, I remember, you know, probably the downtown Odessa project originally was, gosh, I'm trying to think of what the, yeah, Main Street Odessa, yeah, so we put in, you know, trees and beautified, but really didn't do a whole lot to spur, you know, the economy or anything really to redevelop downtown. Then came the concept of the Convention Center Hotel. I think that's probably around Larry's term, if I remember right, I first heard about it.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, so Barbara, you've been around a while, so you probably remember that. So, this has been a long time coming, you know. So, the city creates this vision, they put the money aside, you know, Sandra and I are developers, you know, so we came in very, very late in the game because really, we'd sold our business. We really, we have a property company, we're not, I'm familiar with real estate and development, but we certainly weren't hotel people and didn't intend to be, but knowing that we had sold our business and we were very interested in doing something for Odessa, we wanted to, you know, see that vision through. So, every bit of that vision that was created by Odessa, you know, we wanted to help create, and that's where this whole thing started. And, you know, it's been a great process, by the way, especially working with Barbara. By the way, yeah, I don't think I've publicly got to acknowledge this, but, you know, on our part of our investment with the hotel, it's been invaluable having her as a part of this, because I can tell you, there were some big mistakes that would have been made had Barbara's input not been in there, and some of them would have been costly to us, you know, so, you know, I just want to acknowledge that publicly, Barbara, because she's been, is involved more than anybody else, I mean, on the council, except, with, you know, the exception of Michael, and so, thank you for that. You know, with that said, you know, we're very close. We're two years in as far as the time we've got, you know, committed to this. We're less than a year out from construction being done, and I guess that brings me to, you know, really, The Ector. So, you know, fast forward, here we are at The Ector. The Ector was really part of the city, you know, long before that, and it was the anchor to this whole project, the very nucleus of where the properties got bought out to put the hotel. And so, now, we've got this, you know, fantastic facility that has come in basically at a price higher than we expected. And I guess my comments on this, and this is just me personally, you know, is, it's a phenomenal facility. I mean, I've studied it a lot. I mean, I've been involved in every aspect of the Hotel Convention Center Garage as The Ector. I've studied it at a great detail, and it is phenomenal. I mean, this is basically on par with the Wagner Noel.
Keep going.
Okay, sorry. I thought I knew it'd take more than three minutes, I apologize, but, and that's, and I think that's acceptable, you know. That's a question of whether the city aspires to do that. You know, we've agreed to manage it no matter what, and we're committed to that, just as we are, you know, to manage the Convention Center and the hotel, and we've got the resources to do that. So, I guess what I really want the city to know is, is we'll back you in any way that you want to go on this, but, you know, I think there's probably options. And I speak differently as a citizen than I do, you know, as a business partner. You know, as a citizen, I'm very concerned about the cost of something to that degree. Now, if you are putting it on pair or on par with the Wagner Noel, it's a absolute steal. I mean, when you look at that as an $80 million facility and think that you can get something half of that size, you know, for the price that we've talked about, it's incredible. But that's a Wagner Noel. Is that what we really want? You know, once again, we're committed, that's, this is, that's your decision, and I'm, if I were advocating, I'd go a different route, but I think, you know, from what I understand, there's different considerations, you know, that being one, to finish it as it was originally intended with maybe some, you know, value built into it. I think that can be done. I think there's local people that could help us out in achieving that, if that's an objective. I think it could be, you know, pared back a little bit, if you really think about it. Theatrical is, you know, we've done a lot of research, you know, we're part of now the National Association of Historic Theaters, and we, you know, have gone to several meetings. You know, theater is not something that typically makes money. It's almost always subsidized. Now, do we want theater in Odessa? You know, that's up to you guys. If you do, we're going to help make it happen. If you don't, that's a way to cut back on some of the cost for The Ector, okay? As a third option, you know, I would like to, you know, I think many of you have been presented this, but if you're trying to invigorate downtown Odessa, and you're trying to come in on budget, then the third option would be to make The Ector an open-air venue, and that's not unprecedented. There's other theaters that have done that exact same thing. Primarily theaters have actually maybe caught on fire, and that's what they did to make them, you know, whole again, you know, is to make an open-air venue. Now, so, with that being said, you know, you could take the facade of The Ector, keep it exactly the same. The front looks exactly like it did. You restore it, it's historic, you know, I think in theme with what it was in 1950. The back part of it goes open, and we have very similar venues that we would have going on if it were really a closed venue. And terrifically, if you think about it, you know, we've got 1,000 capacity in the, you know, ballroom, almost 500 in the junior ballroom. There's not many things that we could really do in The Ector that we couldn't do in the hotel. And don't get me wrong, I love the idea of sticking with that original plan for The Ector, you know. I'm just speaking as a citizen for options and coming in on budget, and if that becomes the consideration, you know, I would like to see, you know, that either two or three happen. And I also think, and I actually, I brought this picture because this was rendered over a year ago, and I'll show this to you guys, I'll show it to the public first, but, you know, this is the hotel, and this is the parking lot for the Odessa American. And originally, when we agreed, we took on the plaza, there was a million dollars extra, the city was going to go across the street and move the plaza. Everything stopped about talk about that, because, you know, we got to overruns on The Ector, and that money moved towards The Ector. Well, you know, as a citizen, I think that, you know, this has a water feature, it has parking. I mean, we've already got huge parking issues right now downtown in our area of a hotel because of construction. That's 170 construction workers. We can have 1,000 people in the ballroom, 500 people in the junior ballroom, 800 people in The Ector. Think about that. And right now, that whole parking lot is completely full, and about three-quarters of the parking spots are round. Any day that you go there is full. We've designated no parking, and frankly, we don't have any parking for the workers that the hotel designated. They're actually on the site beside the hotel where there was originally rendered additional hotel option for the future, that will be hotel parking for, we've got about 40 spots for potentially up to 140 employees. So, we've got 100 people that are going to be parking on the street. So, I'm just trying to bring that in light with the council and thinking about the parking being there, and also, I'll bring this up. Just to give consideration to that, now, that doesn't have to be, you know, whether, if that was option three, you know, as far as the open-air venue, I think the city could still come in on budget and deliver that to the public, too. If the city decides to go option one, I'd still like to see that happen, so much so that I think we would contribute towards trying to make it happen. If you look at the, there's a residential component of that. We were originally, the reason that's rendered is because we were going to do that. We've actually now had to put that money into the hotel, but we still have visions of doing that residential, too. So, I guess the short story is here, you know, we're still committed to downtown, we're committed to the city, we're committed to Convention Center, we're committed to The Ector, but what we need is a decision to be made, because we've actually started trying to book acts, you know, if we're going to, it takes a year in some cases to book acts. We've got a partnership with the Spencer Theater up in Riedosa to bring acts to both places, and we need a timeline to operate within, you know. So, as your partner, I'm asking you to make a decision. I mean, it doesn't, of any of the three, it's your decision, and I would like to meet with any one here individually, you know, that wants to go into this in specific, so we can talk about it in detail. But at the end of the day, it's a big decision. I get it, you know. I would not want to be on the other side here trying to make the decision on The Ector, but I do want you to know we're committed to whatever it comes out to be, to running it, and I would also like to go ahead and plant that seed for the consideration for the parking lot across the way. And I know Barbara's big on parks, and we won't ever get a second chance, and I know we want retail, and we want residential, there's room for all of that downtown, but we have to plan for the future, and so, I appreciate everything that the council's done, the vision that this council's had, the past councils have had, and we very much appreciate being partners with the city. It's a pleasure and honor to do business with you, so, thank you.
Well, Toby and Sandra, thank you for what you've done.
Yes.
Vision's one thing, but you have to have money to get things done, and y'all not only said this is our vision, but you've put the money up to do it, and, you know, we just can't thank you enough. Y'all were gems of the community before, and now you're even more, so thank you on behalf of the council, so.
Are we going to discuss this now?
It's not on the agenda, it's just a, so, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.